Looks like Aaron's been enjoying some of Trinidad Sea spiders.
Yeah, let's see.
What did you say?
Yes, I have.
I said, it looks like Aaron's been enjoying some of Trinidad Sea spiders. Wow.
Yes, I did manage to get out and grab a few of them.
It's a good, it's a good year. I recommend it.
Yes.
Sounds like we're getting some, uh, some of the news here in the background. So we're just, uh, I think we have a quorum. We're just waiting on Diane to give her a couple more minutes here. Diane, I see you there, um, but no video or have you joined the call? Oh, there you are. I can see you now. Sorry about that. All right. I think the gang is all here and we can go ahead and call the City of Trinidad Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, November 17th, 2021 to order. And, uh, if I could, uh, start with a roll call, please.
Sure. Commissioner Kelly.
I'm here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Stockness. Commissioner Hopkins.
Here.
And Commissioner Hakenin.
Here.
Excellent. Next up is the approval of the minutes from the September 15th and October 20th meeting. So let's start there and I'll start with commissioners first before I open to public comments on the minutes. I reviewed them and I did not have any changes. Does anyone else have any comments or changes? Mr. Johnson, Commissioner Johnson.
Yes, thank you. Um, on the, uh, minutes for September 15th, page two, second paragraph, uh, last sentence, uh, Parker responded that the project requires a building permit for a cha- chance of use, I believe that should be change of use. And then also on the same set of minutes on page four.
Okay. Wait, is this thing that says stay participant? So I think, wait, I gotta make sure my, I'm on mute.
Go ahead, Commissioner Johnson.
Let's see, page four, second paragraph from the bottom, last sentence. Um, she suggested that feed should be allowed. I believe that should be fee. So just from some clarifications. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, and I will note, um, Anton pointed out that I did not update city staff on October 20th minute. So neither Zetter or NAFO were here, but Sousa, Sausa, I'm sorry, Anton, I'm not sure how to pronounce your last name. But I will note that.
Okay. Other comments or changes to the minutes? All right. I don't see any other commissioners with hands raised, so let's go to public comments. Are there any public comments on the minutes from the 15th or the, uh, of September or 20th of October? All right. Uh, sorry. Uh, let me close public comments and bring it back to the commission. Diane?
I thought we were just doing the 15th and we weren't doing the 20th. So on page two of six on the 20th, you made a comment, um, that the definition, last paragraph, that the definition of vegetation removal um, in the views and vegetation ordinance be revisited. So I just wanted to bring that up. And that, um, the definition of removal and the views and vegetation ordinance provides extenuating circumstances. That's on page three at the top. And I think we just need to talk about extenuating circumstances in uh, views and vegetation, tree removal. And then I'm kind of confused, Trevor, because the city needs to be defined better, but it's not always a requirement for the Coastal Act. Is that right?
Well, the Coastal Act, um, definition of development includes major vegetation removal. Um, but it doesn't further define that. The Coastal Commission itself generally seems to use 12 inches, um, DBH and/or 500 square feet of area. And, and, but, you know, removal itself isn't defined either. So we're not going to find that in the Coastal Act. Um, we'll just have to revise the city's ordinance and just make sure it stays consistent with the Coastal Act.
Yeah, I'm not talking just about removing. I'm talking about all of it, maintaining and then height. I need to, we need to go over the height. Okay. I just wanted to bring that up because it's important. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Stockness. And maybe we should, um, when we get to the part where we talk about future agenda items, we should add that to our list. So thanks for reminding us. Um, okay. So I didn't see any public comments on the minutes. Um, so I'm going to go ahead and, uh, ask if there is a motion to approve what these suggested changes.
Move to approve as amended.
A second there.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Approval of the minutes passed unanimously. And we are, uh, ready to approve tonight's agenda. Are there any questions or comments or suggested changes to tonight's agenda? Okay. I see no suggested changes and I have none. So we'll go ahead and move on to items from the floor. At this time, we call, uh, on members of the public to speak for up to three minutes on items that are not, uh, on tonight's agenda. So let me open to public comments. Are there any items from the floor? All right. I see no, uh, hands raised at this time. So, uh, with that, we will go ahead and move on to tonight's agenda. Starting with item number one, which is the Verizon 2020 dash zero three, uh, design review, grading, use permit and coastal development permit to fully decommission the cellular site on Trinidad Head. All remaining equipment, fencing and non-native vegetation, including several large Monterey cypress trees will be removed. And the site will be regraded and restored with soil amendments and native vegetation. This is located at the Trinidad Head Cellular Site, which is APN number 042121004. And so as always, we will start with one of Trevor's fantastic staff reports.
Thank you, Cheryl. So yeah, so this is a project that the city and the service providers have been working towards for a number of years. Just a little bit of background. Most of you are probably familiar with the site on Trinidad Head. Trinidad Head was annexed into the city, acquired from the federal government, annexed to the city in 1983. Um, there was an existing Cox Cable, uh, communication facility on the site and, um, the city leased that out to, um, Cal North Cellular, starting in 1997. And then over the years, there were a number of, um, co-located facilities there. Some new, new poles, new equipment, um, added over the years. And, but then, uh, I don't know, maybe five years ago, the last time the lease ran out, the city decided, um, because the cultural significance and, um, you know, scenic and, and environmental qualities of the head, that that, um, kind of commercial use was not appropriate. And it's, it's in the open space zone. Um, and so has just been renewing the lease, um, on an annual basis. While the service providers, um, build new, new cellular sites, um, outside of city limits. So, um, the other providers that were located there have removed their equipment. And so it's just Verizon that's left. Um, their second replacement site should be online before the end of the year. And so they will be ready, um, to decommission the site. So that basically involves removing, um, all, all the equipment. Um, the poles, the, the concrete pads, um, the equipment cabinets, um, all the fencing will all be removed. Um, there are also, I think about nine, uh, mon- large Monterey cypress trees that, um, were planted to, to screen the site at one point. And because they're non-native, um, those will be, need to be removed. So that's why it's, it's a use permit because some of those are over 12 inches DBH. Um, because it's changing structures, it's design review, it's, um, you know, regrading the site. So that's a grading permit and coastal development permit. Um, the project does include revegetation of the site. So the soils will be regraded and prepped and, um, replanted with native vegetation. Um, the city engineer did have a number of comments on the plans, the current set of plans that you have there. So there will need to be some, some changes to that, that will need to be approved by the city engineer prior to them getting the demo permits or the, um, encroachment permits to do the work. So that's, that's the project. Um, the project is consistent with, with the zoning, the open space zoning is intended to, um, you know, maximize preservation of the natural and scenic character of the area and provide for, um, recreation uses. And so this will return the site, um, to be more consistent with, with zoning. Um, the city engineer has asked for some additional grading details and some erosion control details. So that has been included as conditions of approval. And the city engineer will need to make a finding that the, that the grading won't adversely affect the drainage or lateral support or other properties in the area. Um, the, the project will, is also consistent with general plan policies, um, keeping Trinidad Head in its natural state. Um, protecting plants and rare plants and animals, um, in the city. Uh, there will be, um, some, some traffic associated with the decommissioning. Um, but it won't require closure of the trails or the, or the roads, except in the immediate vicinity of the lease site. So it won't affect recreation. It's not in an area that is, um, designated as unstable. There's no sewage disposal associated with the project. Um, there is a landscaping plan, um, as part of the restoration of the site. Um, that will require some follow-up, uh, monitoring. What I've proposed at this point is that, um, that Verizon provide the city with, with the estimated costs of doing that monitoring for three years. And that the city will actually follow up with that. That seems like more, um, logistically, that would, um, be easier to ensure that that takes place. Um, as, as we know, Trinidad Head is a tribal cultural resource. And I did send out, um, referrals and notices as part of this project. I have not received any comments at, at this time. And I am under the assumption that the tribal groups, um, are in support of this project. I did include some conditions requiring that a cultural monitor be on site at all times during ground disturbing activities. And there's an inadvertent discovery protocol in place as well. So that if any resources are encountered during decommissioning, um, there are some provisions in, in place as to how that is dealt with. So the design review and view protection and use permit findings have been written in a manner to allow approval. But as usual, if, if the public or the planning commission, um, you know, has additional information that these findings need to be reworded, um, we should do that. Uh, but staff recommendation is for approval. There's a sample motion there for you. If, if you don't have enough information to make the decision tonight, you could delay action or continue the project. You could deny the project if you feel that certain findings can't be made. Um, or alter the conditions of approval to address any concerns that might come up. Um, the city manager has been working with, um, Verizon representatives. And they have agreed to get the, the new site online, shut down the Trinidad Head site and sort of test to make sure that, that service is still at an acceptable level. Um, before the site is actually, um, decommissioned. So that's not a condition of approval, but it is something that, that the city manager and Verizon have been working together on. So, uh, conditions of approval um, include, you know, meeting requirements of the building official as part of the demo permit. And as I mentioned before, the city engineer, um, the payment of the costs. And then the, the cultural protection, um, conditions of approval. And I'm happy to entertain any questions.
All right. Thank you. Um, I have, uh, one, actually two really quick questions. One is, is the applicant in attendance, Trevor, in case we have any questions for Verizon? Or do you know?
I don't know. There's an iPhone here. I understood that someone would be attending, but I didn't actually.
Not, not critical. I, I just, uh, thought if they were here, we might, we might, uh, recognize them and, and ask questions if we need to. But, um, I don't see anybody coming off mute or raising hands to say that they're here. So we'll assume not.
That's unfortunate.
Hmm, okay. And then, uh, and then the other question I had was, um, who pays for this? Is this all Verizon, uh, at Verizon's expense? Okay. Trevor's nodding yes. Okay. Thank you. All right. Other questions, uh, and comments for Trevor? Or anyone? Commissioner Stockness?
So Trevor, have you been up on the site lately?
Uh, yeah, I went up there about a month or, or two ago with a biologist, um, to, to show him the site that worked on the planting plan.
Okay. Is, is the biologist from SHN?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, how about the city engineer and, um, the building inspector? Have they been up there?
I'm not aware that they have been up to the site, but they have reviewed the plans.
Yeah, I see the engineer has done, you know, a lot on that. Um, so do you think it's going to start before the end of December or is, what's the timeline? Is it now until the end of February? Is that the timeline?
So, um, the, they expected to have their site online by mid-December was my understanding. I think that maybe has been pushed back a couple of months due to supply or a couple of weeks due to supply issues. But I think they still plan on having it online by the end of the year. Um, hopefully, you know, if, if they don't get everything done by, say, around February, you know, we have to think about the, the planting to get those plants established. It needs to, they need to have some wet period. Um, so February is about the end of the planting season for that without, you know, requiring additional watering. Um, so that, that's the, the only timing issue with this.
Okay. And then, um, how are those photos going to be done? I'm kind of, you know, I'm not real techie. So, you know, they said they were going to have some photo surveillance and now what is that? And where, where would that be?
So that's in the revegetation plans. That's part of the monitoring. So I think it's two, two photo points probably. And so, um, you know, they, there's no, you know, there's no specific requirement as to where those have to be. But basically they're just photo points that will be used so that you take photos at the same location for three years. Um, as part of the monitoring report to show the, the growth and survival of the vegetation.
So the biologist does that?
Yes. Um, yeah. So usually for the monitoring, it would be a biologist that would do that.
Okay. That, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Commissioner Hakenin?
I had a, a few actually. This one, um, Trevor, on page four fourteen, the third paragraph, it talks about the cellular site in the fenced area has been maintained to minimize vegetation growth within it. And I guess it's more a general question, uh, you know, how have they done that? Is there any concern or need for soil testing to make sure the soil is going to be receptive? I don't know if they've used, you know, Roundup or herbicides, that kind of stuff. I'll just kind of throw that out there as a comment. I, I would imagine you, has that been discussed at all or?
Um, to my knowledge, they haven't done that chemically. It's just compacted and gravel. And so it's not conducive to vegetation growth in there. So that's why, that's why the soil will need to be kind of scarified and, and prepped, um, before planting.
Okay. Um, another question I had on page thirteen, uh, point six there. Let me see, what are we in here? The, heading the conditions of approval, the one about, uh, they're going to submit us with three years of estimated costs. I have a little bit of, uh, I guess, uh, it gives me a little bit of pause. Um, I would prefer to see them prepay that to whoever's going to perform that. That way we know it's going to happen. There's no issues with cost changes, that kind of stuff. Um, rather than give us the money, then we have to do it. I don't see why that wouldn't be something they could do. Um, that was just, that would be in, uh, a question on that. Is there, do you have any position on that or?
Um, they don't seem to be really set up to do that. And my worry, uh, if, if we left that responsibility to Verizon, that it's going to be really hard for the city to follow up with them and make them do that. Um, and so that was the idea that instead, we just collect the cost upfront and then the city can take care of it. It, it is city property. Um, you know, the city has some, some responsibility for the site as well.
Yeah, I guess I'm more questioning why we can't just ask them to pay it now as a condition of approval.
That, that is the condition. They, they will pay it upfront. So, um, the cost is, um, two to three thousand per year for those monitoring reports. So, um, you know, I will leave that up to the city engineer, the, I mean, the city manager, the exact amount. But it'd be, you know, seven to nine thousand dollars that they would.
So the intent is whatever the bill from, you know, SHN is for the plan and the monitoring, going to get that in total, pay it and okay. The next one on point eight, as far as the inadvertent, uh, uh, discovery, that kind of stuff. Um, is there, I'm just curious for my own education, what kind of tool is there that's given to them as far as who to contact, what numbers, you know, if they do find something, what is that process? Do they, do we provide that to them as the city or?
So that's sort of what these conditions are getting at. Um, there will be, there is a monitor on site. And so, you know, the cultural monitor will be able to identify if something is found. Um, and if it's, you know, an artifact, then the cultural monitor has, has some leeway to determine what is the best, um, course of action. And there are some very specific requirements. Should any human remains be found? Although that's pretty unlikely.
Yeah, I guess my question, you know, specifically states travel historic preservation officers for the Yoracan Ranch to be contacted immediately about the discovery. How do they get those numbers? I just want to make sure those are delivered to whoever's on sites. That way they know you're supposed to call this person. Um, that was my comment on that. Um, again, really kind of getting into the weeds. And then on the Verizon plans themselves, there were just a couple of things I had questions, observations about. One, they have an outdated name of a city manager on the front. I don't know how critical that is. Um, but then that intrigued me and, uh, to, to look into some other stuff here. And there's a few sections, uh, in here on the bottom of plate C1. It talks, the note in the bottom left corner, it talks about complying with the requirements of Contra Costa County Fire Protection District and entities that don't pertain to us geographically up here. Is that just an artifact of where their offices are out of in Walnut Creek?
Yeah, it was. So, and those are, those are the kind, a lot of the kind of things that the city engineer caught. So, you know, he, he kind of redlined all that stuff in there. And so those will need to be updated and
Excellent. Okay, cool.
Receive final approval from the city engineer before they can start work.
And then on A2 and A3, it mentions, uh, you know, things to remove by others, concrete slabs. I, I just want to make sure we know who those others are. And it's not going to be a situation where we're done, Verizon gets done and says, well, that was left to others. Because it also says in the scope of work that concrete, things are being removed that were, so I just want to make sure that that's all neatly tied up into this whole package. And we're not going to have a surprise.
Yeah, that's a good question. And I had some back and forth with them as well. These plans were originally prepared almost a year ago. And so that equipment was there at the time. It has since been removed.
Okay. And like the concrete pad that it references where equipment used to be, that?
That, that was AT&amp;T removed that about a year. I think we approved that. Well, yeah, they, they, they removed theirs about nine months ago, I would say, that concrete pad. Um, and, and Verizon has acknowledged that they will remove everything that is left.
Got it. Okay, cool. And then the very last thing I think I have here in the revegetation on page six, 5.0 corrective action. Uh, basically, I'm just curious, who bears the cost for that? As I read that, it refers to, for whatever reason, the revegetation plan doesn't, doesn't, you know, set after the three to five year plan. Where does that money come from to replant and revegetate?
Um, that would have to come from the city if that happens. And it's definitely, you know, I sort of thought about that, but it, you know, again, it would be hard to estimate if and when that might happen. And to follow up with Verizon in three or four years, if that is the case, you know, it's difficult. And I sort of saw that as, again, this, this site was already in existence when the city acquired it. Um, you know, the city has been making money off, off the lease. Um, and, you know, is responsible for, for maintenance of trails and, and other improvements on Trinidad Head. So I figure that's, that's really just part of the maintenance of Trinidad Head that the city is responsible for beyond, beyond the three years.
Should it not take? Okay. All right. Thanks. That's it for me.
Thank you. Other comments or questions for Trevor? Commissioner Johnson?
Good. Uh, Trevor, I wanted to follow up on your comment, and you made, and as part of the, um, report. You said that, um, they were not going to begin the demolition until the new, uh, towers, or the new facility was up and running. Um, and, and, and I assume that what that means is that, that the coverage will be somewhat consistent with what was provided by, uh, the facility on the head. What happens if the coverage is not, uh, consistent? Uh, and does that mean then that, um, uh, that this, this whole demolition will be delayed until there is some resolution to that? I, I'm a little confused as to what the agreement here is.
I, you know, it's a good question, so... And I have not wanted to get into that because, for a couple of reasons. One is it's the city that's requiring them to leave in the first place. Um, and the city made that very clear a number of years ago, and I don't see how the city can make them stay. You know, um, so, you know, I think it's a gentleman's agreement with, with Eli, that, you know, they've agreed to do that. And I, you know, I don't think it's something that the city can really, you know, we, we, we told them they have to leave, and now we can't say, "Oh, no, you can't leave until your service is up to a certain level." But, you know, that's not...
No, I, I completely understand that, and, and I just wanted to, if nothing else for the record, clarify what, what that statement that you made meant. Um, uh, you know, to, to the first order, all of the coverage information that, that they publish seems to, uh, show or demonstrate that the coverage will be essentially the same. But, uh, uh, your, your comment that, uh, they were not going to start the demolition until the, um, that, until the new facility was up and running just kinda bothered me a little bit, so that, that's, that's what I, uh, wanted to clarify.
Well, now, so they, they do have one site that's up and running, and, you know, I think they, they wanted to do this, you know, months ago, and they agreed to hold off until this new site is in place, and, um, so, yeah, and that's, that's their agreement with, with Eli, and I wasn't really involved in that.
I understand. Um, I, I have one more question. Um, I, I, I certainly understand that, uh, we're gonna clear this, uh, facility basically down to the ground. Um, it's not completely clear to me, however, uh, that there aren't underground conduits. And, uh, my concern would be probably primarily from a safety concern, and it's not clear on any of the, um, the, the, um, plans, uh, where the AC power, for example, terminates coming into the facility, and whether or not that'll be terminated uh, far enough away so that, uh, prying fingers and, and, uh, folks will not, uh, have a problem of, um, uh, exposing, uh, the AC power wherever it is. And the other thing I, I hope is that any, any wiring that's in the underground conduits will be removed as well. Um, and then the third part is, I don't know if we intend, if they intended to remove the conduits or not. That might make the landscaping very difficult. But that isn't really made very clear in any of the, uh, plans. Do you have any insight into that? Unfortunately, we don't have the, the agent here, so it's hard to kinda figure out where that is. Maybe you know the answer to that.
Yeah, no, that's a good question. Um, my understanding is they're gonna remove everything from within the site itself and basically cap it somehow, um, but that would be something that we can ask the city engineer to follow up on. Um, you know, we don't want them necessarily removing it all the way to the source because we wanna minimize ground disturbance as well. Um, but we do wanna make sure it's, it's safe and, uh, not gonna be a problem in the future. Um, you know, I, um, they, they were in a hurry to get on this meeting so that they could make sure that they were ready to decommission when the other site goes online, since it's been delayed. Um, I assume this could be continued to December. Um, and, and maybe some of these questions could, could be answered, if, if you so desire.
Uh, well, that's one option. Another option is to have Verizon, as part of the con, conditions of approval, provide additional information as to how, um, AC power and other comm lines and underground conduits are gonna be dealt with. Um, but, yeah, that's my, yeah. Um... Yeah, I, I was a little concerned because this is pretty much a boilerplate, uh, uh, front end here for this thing, and there's some stuff in here that the contractors to verify the current RF design, um, for example, as one of the notes. So I assume that, uh, we're dealing with an old set of, of documents, or and, and, and that that is not applicable at this point.
Yeah, there's a number of things, you know, and it says, you know, no vegetation to be removed, but the, you know, that note, so there's, yes, the, it, there was a lot of red marks when I got it back, the plans back from the city engineer.
Okay, those are my questions, comments, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the commissioners? All right, then I will open to public comments. Are there any, uh, public comments with regard to the Verizon application? All right, seeing none, I will bring it back to the planning commission. So what do you guys think about this one? I mean, my, I'll tell you, my initial reaction was, um, that overall this is consistent with what the city has asked the, um, Verizon, the provider, to do, um, that it's consistent with the general plan, and our, um, request to keep Trinidad Head as pristine as possible and as natural as possible. And the community, uh, has been in favor of it. It's a little bit before my time in terms of involvement with this topic, so, um, I don't know all the history, but my understanding is that this is something that, uh, friends of Trinidad Head and others in the city, uh, were, were actually quite, um, keen on, so. Um, but if there are some, you know, concerns, and we need to continue, we can do that. So, how do you guys feel about it?
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll reiterate what I said just earlier. Uh, I'm, I'm perfectly okay with, um, um, uh, uh, cleaning this up tonight. I would just add an additional, um, condition of approval that, uh, Verizon provide additional information regarding termination of AC power and a, any other signal or RF, uh, wiring that's completely removed, and, and, um, clarify the extent to which they will, uh, cap or remove underground conduit. And with that, I, I would be fine with, uh, with, uh, you know, voting on this, this evening.
Okay.
Long time coming.
Yeah, yeah. Commissioner Stockness?
Yeah, I, I would be willing to vote too. I just want a word from the person that did the report, the building inspector, and the city engineer, if they could just come to one of our meetings and just say, "Hey, this is what happens, you know, this, this is what will happen, or this is how we feel," just so we know that they, you know, I know the, the city engineer's done quite a bit of work, but, you know, the building inspector's gonna need to check those AC conduits in the, in the ground, um, area, and that way, we'll just, I'd feel better if I had a little, um, commitment from them, and then, um, as far as who's gonna maintain it, it's probably, you know, the people that do the trail, the Trinidad, um, you know, the trail up the head, which would probably be Kyle, and I don't know if we have anybody else. Okay.
I would agree, um, we could, so, would it be acceptable for you if I follow up with, with the building official and city engineers' recommendations and, and findings once we get through this process and get their plans approved?
Right, and then, and then talk to Eli and say, "Who's gonna maintain it?" Is, is the maintenance guy that does the trail, is, is he gonna be up there maintaining it? Okay, okay, sure, that would be great, Trevor, thank you.
So I'm gonna, I'm just gonna go ahead and add that as condition... Well, I don't know if it needs to be a condition, because it's not an applicant responsibility that I come and report back. I will just come and, and report back if that's okay.
Yeah, it, it would just be good to have, you know, and then maybe Eli can, um, give us an update too, since he's not here right now. Okay, thanks. And you know, you know what else? The, um, the Churisai, uh, no word from them, right? Yeah, and that, that's kind of a, you know, that's a little bit of an issue too. Not bad, but I mean, I want them to know what's up. And, you know, we, we're gonna have the cultural monitor, but they, I don't know, they, we just need to get them on board, you know, if they...
I, I think that they are on board with this project. I did send out, um, re, referrals a few weeks ago, and then when I sent out the notice, I also, I, I sent hard copies and emailed, and I included these conditions of approval with my email so that they could look at the conditions of approval, and I, I included the vegetation, the revegetation plan as well. Um, so I'm, I have to assume that they are satisfied with what is there.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner, oh, I'm sorry, thank you, Diane. Commissioner Hakenin, I think you had your hand raised as well?
I did, um, it, with regards to the plans, and I, I just have a hard time with the details being a little bit out of alignment, and I'm, I'm thrilled that the, uh, city engineer saw even more than, than Richard and I saw with, uh, some of the, the boilerplate language on there. I, I would like to add that in perhaps more specifically, condition two A, because condition two seems to be specific to the grading permit and that aspect of it. I, I would, I wanna find a way to move this forward, because, you know, I know it's been a long-term goal of the community, and, and I'd say a reason to do this. And for me, that would make me very comfortable to have something, some language in their condition two A that the city engineer also needs to sign off on. All document, the, you know, the accuracy of all documentation provided by Verizon, you know, their drawings, their plans and whatnot, does, does that make sense?
Yeah, how about we add that to condition number nine? So, um, so the, the applicant to provide the additional information on the conduit removal and/or capping, and to provide revised plans, um, as, as required by the city engineer, um, to be approved by the city engineer prior to work occurring.
Perfect, that works for me.
Okay, um, does somebody wanna try to, uh, turn that into a quick motion here? So we can bring this to a vote. There, there's a motion, uh, written on page eleven of the document, and I think, uh, what, what I hear being suggested is that in addition to that, we would add, uh, into condition number nine, the termination of AC power, clarifying the extent of removal of the conduit, and then city engineer to approve final plans. Does that sound right?
Yes.
Okay. All right, let me, I'll just go ahead and make a motion. So based on, since I, based on the information submitted in the application, included in the staff report and public testimony, I find that the project is consistent with the Trinidad Local Coastal Program and other applicable regulations, and I move to adopt the information and findings in this staff report and approve the project as submitted in the application and as described and conditioned in the staff report, including the suggested changes to section nine, or condition nine, regarding termination of AC power, clarifying the extent of the removal of the conduit, and with the city engineer to approve final plans. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, and that passes unanimously. Um, can I one, ask one quick question, Trevor, that's sort of related to this? The, the power poles that are still there, completely unrelated to, uh, cell phones, but I just don't, it, historically, has that been discussed as well? I, I would assume so.
Hey, you know, it's, it was always a little... I always thought it was a little strange, um, when this site became so offensive, um, because it's such a small part of the improvements that are seen on, on Trinidad Head. Um, you know, and I, I think a lot of people actually thought, you know, we're under the impression, or even still are, that the Coast Guard Tower is actually the cell tower. Um, but no, those, yeah, you know, I, I think the power poles are, you know, they're much more visible. Um, but they also, you know, they support, uh, you know, a government function that, that provides a public benefit, and although cell phones obviously provide a public ben, benefit, it's more of a commercial use, and so I think that's where the difference lies, but I'm, I'm not sure.
Okay, thanks, I just, yeah, I just wondered if that had ever been discussed, because I find those more visible myself, but, um, or as visible. Um, it'd be nice to just, yeah, clean the whole thing and make it look like, like brand new. Brand old. All right, anyway, moving on. All right, our next, uh, agenda item is, uh, gosh, oh, general plan update. So the community design element, this is a discussion of the draft community design element of the Trinidad general plan, continued from the October twentieth, twenty-one meeting, and you should have a copy of the revised, clean copy in your packet. And, uh, Trevor, when you're ready, feel free to kick us off with the staff report.
Yeah, so, um, I revised the community design element based on our discussions at the last meeting. I also updated some things based on newer information, revised some of the language based on some of the recent, you know, more recent elements that we've looked at, um, and also the coastal commission comments that we've received. So, um, I did quite a bit of updates. I tried to, um, eliminate some, some repetitive policies and combine some sections and shorten it a little bit. Um, and so that's, that's what I've provided you.
All right, thank you. Uh, well, let me go to the commissioners, um, and see if there are any immediate, uh, questions or comments. I guess, uh, you know, while, while folks are getting organized and, and pulling out the design element, I'll just say that my, um, my notes to myself were really that this is getting, one of those elements that I think is getting really close to being done. And, and we do have a tendency to, I think we're all, um, set a pretty high bar for how we do on these general plan elements. But, uh, you know, sometimes, you know, when I worked at Microsoft, we used to have a saying, you know, that sometimes things are just good enough, like we get to a point where it's good enough. It, it may not ever be perfect, but it's good enough, and we, you know, we're just gonna roll with it. And I, I guess my, uh, looking at this, I, I kinda had that feeling, that this is darn close, Trevor, so, um, anyway, so if there's anything that jumps out at anybody, that's, you know, kind of a sticking point, let's go ahead and bring that up, but otherwise, I think we're getting darn close. My editorial comment.
Yeah, I think, um, yeah, I think it's... I mean, I think the policies are good, you know, most of them, how could you really argue with them? Um, you know, I think one of the things I pointed out in my staff report, if there, there's several policies that have these kinda design guidelines in them, like one point four, and three point three, and two point two, and so, um, you know, and four point four, five point one, so those are kinda, that's, that's where we're gonna pull the design guidelines, um, that's, that's what we're gonna use to create the design guidelines, so those might be, um, ones to pay particular attention to.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll definitely need to spend some time on that, for sure, so. Uh, Commissioner Stockness, I saw you had your hand raised.
So I just need to reveal that, uh, Tom Hopkins and I had a- So I just need to reveal that, uh, Tom Hopkins and I had a little chat in the market a couple of weeks ago about the design element. It wasn't anything really um, on any of this. It was just, you know, something about the city and I just wanted to, I don't remember the date, but just wanted to include that.
Okay, thank you.
Trevor, are you gonna go through it and then we're gonna comment?
I think it's ready, I mean, it's ready for comment, um, you know, we can sort of go through it section by section or however you want. Or, you know, person by person, you can give me your comments, um, whatever works for you is fine with me.
But let's do a roundtable if we can, um, and start with you, Diane, any, on any part of it that you wanna, wanna talk about.
So we'll start, let's see, am I, okay, we'll start on, um, page one. Um, it's number two. Um, community design in the coastal act. The last sentence in paragraph one, because of the emphasis on public resources, the coastal act only protects public views, okay? The next paragraph. So this is the one area where Trinidad's view protection has differed from the coastal act and its regulatory protections of private views from residences. Okay, so in the nineteen seventy-six general plan and the seventy-eight, um, plan, um, the residents were supposed to have, um, be able to protect their views. But the process for that, Trevor, is huge, okay? Um, okay, page two. So, um, ba- under background, the last sentence, paragraph one, visual resources can be readily degraded through poorly located. Um, designed and maintained structures, roads, signs, landscaping and utility, uh, poles that block coastal views alter natural landforms and detract from the small town character of the community. Next paragraph. Sentence three, the city has also adopted a views and vegetation ordinance that establishes a permit process. Restore views that have been unreasonably blocked by growing vegetation. So can you go over, um, the permit process for that, Trevor?
So yeah, so that's the views and vegetation, um, ordinance. We have been through that process one and a half times. Um, so that is where someone whose neighbor has vegetation that is blocking their views can come to the city. It's a two-step process where, um, they would come to the planning commission, the planning commission would determine whether views have been unreasonably blocked. And we have some criteria for determining that. Um, and then the next step, if they have been unreasonably blocked, then the next step would be to determine the restorative action, and that can be, you know, a- anything from, from trimming and thinning to complete removal. And so that's, that's something, it's called a view restoration permit, and that was, it's something that the city would order, um, you know, the one time we went through the full process, the, you know, the, the owner of the vegetation was fairly cooperative and, uh, agreed to do what the neighbors were asking. And so it was a pretty straightforward process, um, you know, with a neighbor who refused, um, it, it could get messy.
And is there a fee for the view restoration permit?
Yes, um, I think the, the applicant, so the neighbors pay the initial permit fee. Um, but then, I can't remember exactly how the ordinance, I think the ordinance splits the, the rest, restorative action fifty-fifty. Um, but there, the planning commission can find that some other split is more equitable. Um, so, so that there is some flexibility for the planning commission in determining that.
Okay, um, and that, okay, that's not like the large tree permit.
Well, so that, yeah, there, it's a little different. So that is a permit to make someone remove a tree. Um, and, and if it is a large tree and it's going to be removed, the ordinance does recognize that then you would have to issue a use permit. Um, uh, under the, as a, and a coastal development permit to remove large trees.
Yeah, I gotta, I'm writing this down. Okay, so on page three, um, CD one point three. Um, prohibit structures, fences, walls, signs and landscaping from significantly, significantly blocking views of the harbor, Little Trinidad Head. Uh, Trinidad Head, the Pacific Ocean, rocky coastline or islands from key viewing points within an occupied resin, residential or, um, commercial structure. So this is happening in several parts of the city. What is, um, this one point three? So there's lots of, of, of fences, landscaping and, um, I'm not sure, there's one sign, but the sign isn't that bad. All right, now one point six. Trees and vegetation shall be maintained such that they do not cause unreasonable view blockage in accordance with the policies and regulations of the city. So, let's see. Okay, I'm trying to find the maintenance one, because this, um, this is happening. Okay.
I think the vegetation maintenance was in, um, the landscaping policies, maybe? Page seven?
Yeah, it's on, the other one is, um, okay, it's one point six point one. Or maybe in, develop a vegetation management plan or program to, for bluff side vegetation maintenance consistent with the protections for issues and cultural resources. So I'm always wondering who's going to clean up the bluff area. Because the trees aren't pruned and there is the broken, um, parking, um, piece that, so people will park and not go over the bluff. Um, and I didn't know how to, you know, approach them or if the city does that, or if the civic club does that. Um, but the management, my main point here is that vegetation management is not being done by residential people and the chair side. Not enough, and, and I'm talking about maintenance, getting it out of the street, pruning trees because they're too high. When I, when I came here, they were not a hundred feet high or fifty feet high or, so I'm saying that the ordinance wants people to develop vegetation management. I know it's in here, but they're not doing it. Who would, who would ask him to do that? I've talked to Eli.
Well, I mean, it's, it's not a simple issue. I mean, obviously, the, the chair I study area has its own issues, but bluff stability is an issue, you know, who owns the property is an issue. So it's not a simple, um, it's not a simple issue and I, 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 I mean, the idea of a vegetation management plan is nice, but I, I actually, I kinda questioned that program, looking at it a little bit more. I mean, the city owns some of the.
I'm talking to Eli about certain areas of town. And this has been, you know, I've been doing this for over a year and, you know, the maintenance guys took care of different things. Like one of the vegetation, I mean, one of the plants was totally covering the, um, water, water pipe, I mean, the water, what's it called, Aaron, the big water thing? Hook the hoses up to?
Water main?
Yeah, water main, okay.
Fire hydrant.
But it, yeah, the fire hydrant, thank you, Aaron. Okay, so, um, let's go to page seven and then I'll get off of it for a while and someone else can talk. And it is in landscaping, Cheryl, page seven. Okay. Requires, C six point two, requires property owners to maintain the landscaping on developed sites such that it does not present any unreasonable view obstructions consistent with the city's views and vegetation ordinance. And it, in my opinion, is not happening. And I've had a couple of comments by some other people in the community, including those cherry trees on ocean and a big tree on east. And I, just a couple of different trees. Now, I could take pictures of them and show you, I don't know. I'm just saying that, that, um, getting the property owners to maintain the landscaping on developed sites is not, is not happening. And I don't think, um, the residents are going to want to do a view restoration permit when it says in the general plan that, um.
Well, I, but I think, I mean, that's, that's why we have the views and vegetation ordinance. I mean, the city can't, the city, cities don't go around telling people to cut their trees down. Um, I mean, this is a very, this is a very unique situation and, you know, I, you know, as a, as a vegetation owner, I mean, veget- vegetation is import, you know, it provides windbreaks. It provides habitat, it provides privacy, um, you know, it's, it's important for property owners too. Um, the owners of the vegetation, and so that's why we have the vision vegetation ordinance to try and balance, you know, views versus, you know, the, the benefits that vegetation provides to the environment and to property owners. But, but the city can't, you know, the city doesn't know if vegetation's blocking someone's view from their living room. They have to come and complain to the city. We can't enforce that without someone bringing that issue to, to the city. So I, I think they, they have to go through the views and vegetation ordinance. That's really the only, the only way.
So if the citizen makes.
Go ahead, Diane.
So if a citizen makes a complaint, then the city manager or the maintenance department would go to those people and say, hey, you need to cut the, the rose.
No, because there's, no, because there's not a, you would have to, um, you know, there, there's a process to go through. There's not, you know, if, if someone says someone's, so there's a six-foot height limit on hedges. So someone can say you're, come to the city and complain that someone's hedge is over six feet in height and the city can go measure it and say, hey, yes, your hedge is over six feet in height, you need to cut it. But a tree, there's no, there's no set, you know, there's no objective, you know, the city can't say, oh, your tree's over, you know, ten feet high, you have to cut it. That's not a standard. And so it requires someone to come in and present evidence as to how the vegetation is blocking views. And, you know, for the planning commission to determine if that is in fact unreasonable and, and what the solution should be.
So we can put heights and dimensions on structures, but not vegetation except hedges. Is that right?
Well, I mean, you, you could put a height limit on trees and we did discuss that as part of the views and vegetation ordinance. But it was determined that that really, you know, sometimes trees enhance visions. I mean, where you can look under them or through them, um, and they add to the coastal view shed. Um, and so, you know, it was determined that a set height limit really wasn't, wasn't the way to go. But that could be revisited in the future.
Okay, I'd like, I'd like to revisit that because, um, I've been here and I live in the city, you know, Aaron, Aaron now lives here in the city, so I walk around a lot. And there are several trees that I feel are too high and some of the other community members feel like a couple of them are too high, a couple of them are dead. And we need to relook at that and maybe, and I, when I said something to Tom, when we had a little chat, I was thinking maybe we, as a commission, could walk around and look at the vegetation. You know, if we're gonna write the ordinance and, um, you know, we could, we could do that. Because we're, we're good with the structures. I mean, that's very defined. We talk about it, it's on paper. Um, they're going solar, all that's really good, but the vegetation maintenance and the height is to me, an issue in town and some other, uh, community members have voiced that. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Stockness. So, uh, let me just to make sure I understand, so i- it, it sounds like fundamentally, you don't have a, uh, an issue with the wording in the, in this general plan element, but more about the ordinance that supports it and the, and the wording in that ordinance and how it's been, being enforced. Is, is that correct or am I?
It's, it's not just the ordinance, it's in, it's in some of the, um, policies that I just read.
But, but I mean, you like the way these policies are written, you just wanna see them enforced. Is that correct or am I missing something?
Yes, oh, all right. And then, and then maybe as a group, look at this vegetation. I mean, we're, we talked about it for the cell tower, but you know, it, it's an issue in town, you know, now we have those great sidewalks and, you know, even some of those trees coming into the city right by the sidewalks are, are pretty big now. They're pretty, but I mean, are they gonna keep growing?
Okay, thank you. So I'm gonna put this down too for future agenda items. So I made a note when we get to that section, Diane, and we'll tee that up. And as far as, you know, taking a field trip, I mean, we can always do that. We've done that in the past, at least on one occasion, as long as we agendize it, we can do a field trip and, and walk through town and so forth. All right, other commissioners, other comments on the?
Thank you.
Thank you. Other, um, comments. Commissioner Hopkins?
Um, I was on, on page three, uh, CD one point four. It says, limit the size and bulk of structures to maintain Trinidad's small town character. I think that sounds really cute and that's very nice, but I think it could be kind of vague. And, and as far as the sizes of structures, don't we already have implementation saying what it can be? And that it should be just following the rules that are already set to, to maintain the character of Trinidad.
Yes, and, and you're right. I mean, um, yes, but I, we still need to have the, the policies, I think, because we're going to revisit those implementation measures. And so I think we still wanna have the policies that sort of lay the foundation for those implementation measures. So that we, we do have size limits, um, and height limits. Um, but it, it is, it, it, it is and will continue to be, I think, a struggle between, you know, having, having these kind of vague, wishful kinds of policies and then putting them into regulations to implement them, you know, and, and, and finding that balance between subjective and objective and allowing flexibility, but also, you know, making your decision-making easier and more predictable. Um, it's a, it's not an easy, design review isn't an easy issue in Trinidad.
No, all right. No, all right. Then thank you. And, and I'm kind of clear on it, I guess. Uh, I was also curious about solar gain. Kind of that's where Diane and I were talking and I was, I was kind of concerned about solar gain for people. And I don't know if that's in here anywhere. Um, and then the last point that I wanted to make is, is be nice if, if it said to actually be a good neighbor somewhere, like just be a good neighbor. Maybe that's wish-
I wish, I wish
Could be wishful thinking also.
No, no, I was just smiling because I, yeah, I thought I saw that somewhere actually about something like, you know, but maybe I'm thinking of a different document.
I don't know about the be a good neighbor, but I believe there's something in here about solar.
Yes, solar for sure.
Oh, I missed it. All right. Thank you. Looks good.
Yeah, solar's in here. I, I can't tell you exactly.
It's on page eight, page eight.
Thank you. Thanks, Diane. I couldn't, couldn't lay my hands on it. Um, do you know which, which section? Oh, yes.
It's CD seven point two, seven point one two.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I thought there was something more specific to solar too, um, unless I took that.
Yeah, I saw it also. I did see this, but it didn't really, I was saying like more solar gain.
Yeah.
It's the, you can't take some of your neighbor's solar gain.
Okay.
Oh, got it. Okay. I see what you mean. So you can't, so that means you're taking their, you're taking, you're shading their, their solar, yeah, installation. Okay. I hadn't heard that term before. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Commissioner Hopkins. And anything else or?
No, I'm done. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. Uh, others? Comments? Commissioner Hakenin, I saw your hand first and then Commissioner Johnson.
Um, great job, Trevor, distilling this down and, and I, I personally, I appreciated the, uh, the minutes from two thousand and two. That was very helpful for me. One, just to see the historical repetition of these issues that we still are struggling to, to solve, but also just kind of getting some, some background. Um, for me, the only thing that really jumped out just as an opportunity to kind of streamline maybe a little more is under the lighting. I feel like there's a lot of redundancy or ways CD five point one could be, I don't know, distilled down even further. And, and again, maybe to Cheryl's point, this is just, you know, it's good enough. Um, but I, I feel like the same thing is said separately about commercial, as I said, about residential. It's kind of more like there's, you know, a general concept of all lighting should be directed downward, minimize light spillage, both commercial, residential, all security lighting should be done to enhance it with the least amount of light. I don't know. I just thought that maybe is an opportunity to kind of combine those things into one. A- a- and maybe that's not necessarily the intent of this. Maybe we want to get specific, but I feel like just kind of a more general thing like here, when you're doing lighting, for goodness sakes, you know, minimize it, do the least amount you need to provide the impact you want and, and go from there. That, that was really all that jumped out to me.
And, and I agree, there's a, there's a few of those, there's, there is still a little bit of redundancy in here. Sometimes I wasn't sure which one to take out. Um, so yeah, um, if, if you see those, uh, let, yeah, let me know which one you like better. Um, but yeah, I, I agree. There, there can be some more condensing.
Just like, you know, specifically A and B under CD five point one, both talk about lighting, kept minimis-, you know, minimize light spillage. You know, and that, I don't know, it just seems like that could be in one statement instead of two.
Yeah.
So combine A and B, uh, Aaron, or just keep Aaron, A and B, get rid of the rest.
I, I guess I'm open. I just feel like, you know, the lighting in town, whether it's residential, commercial, do we really need to distinguish between those two is kind of more
I see what you mean.
My point. The, the principles, I would think we would want to be the same for town, that nobody should have light spilling everywhere. Nobody should have outrageous security. You know what I mean? Just do the, get what you want accomplished, but with the least amount of impact. You know, I would hope that commercial lighting would be, you know, pointed downward and whatnot.
Um, no, I agree. Night lighting, public safety light and light mounting, they all have, all, all, all five of those actually really have the same goals. Um, and, and maybe could be combined as all lighting. Yeah.
Yeah. So maybe just short, yeah, I, I mean, I like, I'm up for um, shortening things up where we can and taking out redundancy. Definitely.
But, yeah, that was it. Thanks.
Commissioner Johnson, did you have something you wanted to add as well?
Thank you. Um, let's see. Um, yeah, I think my phrase would be a little bit different than yours, Cheryl, but this is, this is polishing something. Um, time to move on. Um, uh, but just a couple of things real fast. Uh, on, uh, page three, at the bottom of the page, CD one dot six. Uh, this has to do with trees and vegetation shall be maintained such that they don't cause unreasonable view, view blockage. Uh, you know, we're going to go through this a little bit more, but I, I was more concerned about the last sentence, new landscaping shall be included in the design review process. That certainly makes a lot of sense and I think we need to do that. Uh, what, um, is maybe a gray area is oftentimes, um, one could consider some landscaping to be upgraded from the existing to new. And some things are kept, some things are destroyed or taken out and new installed. And, uh, I just thought we should maybe clarify at what point the landscaping needs to come back for design review. I, I, I don't know that I have an answer for it. Maybe, you know, 50% of the landscaping is replaced. It has to go through design review. I don't know, but it, I just was worried about that just a little bit. Um, there's a couple of, you know, minor typos and things that I'm not going to get into that. Um, let's see. Um, on page six, uh, CD four dot three, item D, uh, which, which is the one of flush mounted signs, et cetera. Uh, and I'm looking at the last phrase of that, freestanding sign shall not exceed 15 feet in height. Um, my impression of a freestanding sign um, in Trinidad, if it was 15 feet in height, would be huge. And I know that years ago we did a sign inventory and spent a fair amount of time of trying to, um, uh, get our arms around the whole issue of signage. And, uh, I, I know that one of the issues that we dealt with was the height of all signs, but then also the clearance on sidewalks, because you don't want them too low because people's head would bang into them. But I am a little concerned about the 15 feet in height. I don't know that there's an answer other than my, my preference would be to lower that. So I, I, I think that if we're going to do anything, I think that that should be reduced to something less than 15 feet. I can't think of any reason why we would need to have a sign that would be 15 feet high uh, on a free, a, a freestanding sign is what I mean. A freestanding sign that would have to be 15 feet high. Um, let's see. Um, on page eight, um, goal CD dash nine. Um, I, I, I'm not sure I quite understand this one. I, I think there might be just a couple of things that got combined into uh, one, uh, goal, but we start out talking about, uh, energy efficiency. Um, and then we suddenly move into support, public art and open space and protecting important community resources. Um, might be nice to, or might be useful to break that out perhaps into two goals, because I think those are two equally important things, but don't necessarily, in my mind, um, coalesce into one goal. And having said that, then, uh, looking at, um, uh, CD seven dot two, which is to encourage small scale onsite renewable energy such as wind, solar and micro hydro uh, in new and existing development. Um, I, could you clarify, Trevor? I, I, I thought that there were mandates now that new construction required solar for, uh, residences, or single family dwellings, I should say. And, uh, if that's the case, should we not say something to that effect or somewhere, I thought, and I was just trying to look at it while we were discussing this earlier. Somewhere I thought in the, in the draft, uh, general plan that we talked quite a bit about solar and, um, the way in which to streamline the permitting for that. I thought we had done that and if we haven't, I think we need to, or if it's somewhere else, then maybe we need to reference it, but this is a big deal and, um, and, and I think that this particular policy, if this is the only place where it shows up, needs to really be strengthened and reinforced and made such that people really understand what they can and can't do with respect to solar or other, um, uh, renewable energy sources. And let's see, um, yeah, I think that's it.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Stockness, you had your hand up also.
So Richard, I think, um, the solar, it was either in climate change when we were talking about that or the, um, sea level rise. It was a, Trevor did a big page on that. And I remember a lot of it was kind of, it must've been in one of the other elements, uh, Trevor. Because I remember, Richard, um, oh, at least a whole page on, on that.
Well, we, I know we talked about green building and we had, um, and even in the, in the preface, in the intro, we talked about zero waste and about, um, climate change.
So that's where I think it was.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and then for Tom, um, in the, um, minutes, the April two oh two minutes, the good neighbor thing is in there and it is page three, page three of four, first paragraph, you know, the, the bullet, bullet number three. Good neighbor design approach versus strict standards. So, um, you know, Richard talks about the sign height, and I think that was very valuable. Then we talked about the hedge site. So I'm going to bat this around again. I want to talk about tree height in Trinidad. If we've got height for structures, heights for the roof setbacks, I'm just going to say that's my last comment. I want to talk about tree height in
Okay.
in the design element.
Okay. And I captured that and, uh, for our future agenda items, a vegetation ordinance. And then, um, I, I do want to go back to Commissioner Johnson's comment about the sign height. So do we want to try to close on that right now? Um, I'm just wondering if there's a kind of a standard that cities have adopted. I, I mean, what comes to mind, and I don't want to like call out any particular business or anything. It's just something I just happened to notice. So I just happened to notice and it's probably been there forever, but for some reason I just noticed superb sign. Uh, the real estate, you know, sign that's on the sidewalk, right? Out in front of, um, of, uh, well, out in front of the business, in front of Murphy's.
The lighthouse grill. It's by the lighthouse grill.
Yes, it's by the lighthouse grill. Thank you. Um, and I just had never noticed it before. Now, I don't know how tall that sign is or kind of what its dimensions are or, or what have you. Um, it looks to me like it's about 15 feet tall. Um,
Well, it's as tall as the roof line to the, to the, um,
The lighthouse grill?
Yep.
Okay. And I don't know what that is, but, um, I don't know where I was going with that, except I guess, you know, I, I noticed it. I thought it was a little, little high. So I guess I would agree with, with Richard that, you know, perhaps that's, you know, freestanding signs, that does get, it, it does get pretty, you know, pronounced.
I, I, I should, should point out that you picked an absolutely great example. Uh, that sign did get quite a bit of controversy when it went up.
Oh, okay.
A number of reasons. Um, and, and I guess I'll just add to what I was saying earlier about signs. Um, we, we do have a lot of policies about signs. I'm not sure, Trevor, though, that we've captured the way in which signs get permitted. Maybe we have it somewhere else. Maybe you can direct me there, but, um, I, I think that's a, a very important thing. Partly, primarily, I should say, primarily because nobody really understands what they can do. And, uh, it's only until after the sign goes up that everybody gets upset. And, um, and, and, and obviously, um, no sign is going to be satisfactory to everyone. But on the other hand, uh, some, uh, some direction guidelines, uh, policies on permitting or approval of signs might be useful.
Or enforcement measures. Um, they tried that, you know, back in the early two thousands. So I, I feel that we need to get Eli in on this, um, conversation on the design element. So I'm not ready to approve it.
All right. Okay. Other commissioners? Um, I mean, I, I think that what this, at this point, we're reviewing this and we're making some suggested changes. Sounds like there's, uh, we're not quite ready to say to give this the, the stamp of approval, uh, but there are only a few things that we might consider changing. So one was, you know, shortening and, and, um, kind of, uh, reconciling CD five point one regarding light. Um, we want to talk a little bit more about sign height. It sounds like as far as the vegetation, um, I think my, what I heard was that we were going to talk about that as part of the ordinance discussion. Um, and then I heard also signage, which in general, you know, plans and permits and so forth, which might not directly be part of this element. I think that might be a separate discussion as well. I don't know. Does that, what do you think, Trevor?
Yeah. So I think a number of things that have come up are probably, um, more appropriately dealt with in the implement, in the ordinances and the regulations and the implementation. Um, you know, you know, even having the sign, sign height in the policy is, is, you know, more, more specific than some general plans get. I, I did highlight that because I thought 15 feet was pretty high. I s- I stole those from the city of Arcata, I believe it was. Um, and probably modified them. I wonder if something more like the, the new sign for the Saunders Shopping Center, um, you know, what is that? Eight feet high? That big sign? That might be something more along the lines of a height limit. But I think, you know, things like, um, you know, Richard mentioned the landscaping. And so when does landscaping require a permit? And so that's probably something more in the regulations. If you're upgrading 50% or more, if you're replacing an area of 500 square feet or more, something like that. Um, it, it could potentially be in general plan policies, but it also could be in the regulations. I think for signs, you know, making sure that it's clear that signs are subject to design review. Um, so maybe a policy about that, um, could be added in there. Um, but then the specific regulations for signs are more in the ordinance and, and we do have sign regulations in the ordinance. Um, you know, same, same with solar. I, I did look for green building and the other elements and I didn't see a whole lot of it. There's a section on sustainability in the land use element, but it's pretty um, vague. There, yes, um, new residential construction requires solar panels. There's also a solar, the state has a solar rights ordinance or something like that, that basically gives people the right to put solar panels on their roof and our ordinances are not really consistent with that. So we need to revise our ordinances. Um, so I did, you know, the next step after we sort of get this, um, design element nailed down is then to work on the design review guidelines and, and regulations. So that will be, that will be the next step and we can get more, more into the weeds as part of that, I think.
So, so I guess then thinking about sign policies is four point one, four point two, four point three would stay, could stay in the general plan. 4.1, 4.2, 4.3 would stay, could stay in the general plan, but 4.4, maybe we're getting too detailed as to what the design parameters are for signage. And, and 4.4 could refer to, you know, 4.4 could be more general and then refer to a signage ordinance for more details. So in other words, we take out the part that says, for example, and freestanding signs will not exceed 15 feet in height because it doesn't need to be in the general plan. Because if that changes, if like down the road, we say, oh, no, you know, it should be eight feet. No, it should be 10. Oh, you know, we can't keep changing the general plan. We would change the, the execution plan, the ordinance, right? So maybe, I'm just throwing that out. Maybe we're, what we're saying is we need to helicopter this up a little bit in that section and just be general about it.
Yeah. And I think, you know, maybe not totally eliminating all of those, but making it, making it more or less specific, you know, like D is very specific. No more than one freestanding sign allowed for business and not exceed, you know, that sounds like a regulation to me. But, you know, you know, prohibit the use of flashing moving audible signs. I mean, that could go either way.
I'm just saying like B, B makes sense to me because it's like ensure that the signs, materials, styles and colors complement building facade. So it's like, I mean, the, the general principle of design for signage, right? As we went, you want them to be informative, but you don't want them to be obnoxious. And there's probably a better way to say that. Right? So it's like, you don't want them to block views. You don't want them to make noise and flash and be, you know.
And to your point, 4.4B could, you could make an argument that's already contained within 4.2. You know, to complement or enhance the appearance, you know, integral part of the structure kind of to me implies that material size, color, you know what I mean? So
Yeah.
Definitely a chance to kind of like you said, helicopter up, so to speak.
Yeah, I just feel like, yeah, the more specific we get, we want, we want, you know, this is the spirit of intent. And then we want, you know, we can get into the execution and the, and the devils have the details of the ordinance and stuff for. So anyway, that would be, that's what I'm kind of hearing or thinking. Okay. I see folks nodding. Mr. Hank, and were you going to say something?
I was just gonna, I don't know, would, would it be, would it make sense to put somewhere other in this entire document or each section for more specifics, please see applicable ordinance?
Yeah.
Just, just to really kind of, in case somebody stumbles across this and thinks they have all the information, it says, well, hang on, you want to look here too? I, I don't know, just to try and give people a fighting chance to know where to find the right info. If they just search our website for sign, they might only see this. I don't know.
Yeah. I mean, that's sort of explained in the introduction chapter of the general plan. I think maybe if we make some of these policies more general, that will be more obvious because I, I do think people, most people know to look for, you know, the code, the regulations as opposed to the general plan. But so I, yeah, I don't know if we need, because, because that would be true for every section. Do we need to include that disclaimer in, in each chapter? Or just at the beginning? I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure. We can think about that.
Maybe at the beginning of each. And we've kind of gone back and forth about in the past about, is it at the beginning of the whole general plan or the beginning of each element or so on? So maybe once we get it kind of finalized and get the verbiage the way we want it, we can see if it makes sense to put something in links to the specifics because
But it could all, you know, we could reword the policy so that it's, you know, the, the city's sign regulations will implement the following guidelines or something like that. So that it's clear that there's more than just this.
Yeah, somehow make it clear.
That might be one way to do it.
That sounds good. All right. I think we are done with that topic. Let me open to public comments really quick. Are there any public comments on the, the design element? All right. Seeing that, I'm going to ask commissioners, do you want to take a short break or shall we? Or do you want to soldier on? So to speak, that's probably a bad expression. Okay.
Good to keep going.
Okay. Commissioner Stockness raised her hands. Diane, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just going to go for three minutes and then I'll be back.
Okay. All right. Let's take three, you guys. Want to get some water? Watching Trevor play with the kitty.
The kitty, the kitty's like one of our commissioners.
Yeah.
Well, the kitty's there every week. So.
Yes. The kitty should be, it should hold up a paw when it's time to vote.
It, it's funny. It seems I get council meetings every time I seen start to talk. She comes over my shoulder in, into the council meeting. I don't know what it is.
Ah, that's pretty funny.
So Trevor, where's Eli tonight?
Uh, he teaches a class at CR on Wednesday. He has for years and that's why the city council moved their meetings to Tuesdays.
Yeah. Okay. I'll, I'll check in with him this week and you'll be, you'll be in the office this week too tomorrow.
Um, I am still working from home a lot of the time, but
Okay.
But I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm around.
Yeah. Well, I, I usually see him once a week or every other week, he and Gabe. Yeah. And I think Gabe is the one that is pretty much okaying the signs that are going up. When different thing, or do you, or do you okay them?
Well, so, you know, new signs definitely require design review, you know, with, with a few exceptions, some, some temporary signs, you know, political kinds of signs for sales types of signs. And then residential, you know, like a residential nameplate is exempt. So I think like the, the museum, their signs fell under that, you know, less than two or three square feet. So they didn't need design review. And then, you know, like I mentioned, you know, last meeting, or maybe it was the meeting before on the Vanderpool project. You know, I think it could be argued that changing the sign copy requires design review, but we, we never have. So it's really not, not clear in the ordinance if someone changes an existing sign, you know, just changes the copy, not the size, whether that requires design review. But, uh, you know, a lot of these signs have been in existence. This, there, the city does have a regulation that, you know, signs, any non-conforming sign has to be removed within three years. And there's a lot of those still around that were never removed in 1983, when they should have been. And, you know, but, but businesses always, you know, fight hard for their signs. So it's, it's been kind of a tough, tough issue for the city to, to tackle.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a controversial one, that's for sure. All right, let's move on to our, our next topic, which is residential permit exemptions and waivers. And this I think was continued from a previous discussion, right, Trevor?
Yeah. So I just kind of introduced this at the last meeting and sort of design and objective design standards. So this, I'm, I'm jumping into a little bit more of, of the weeds as opposed to the design elements. So these would be some, these would be in the regulations. So these would be codified in an ordinance. They're just pieces. But so, you know, we have, the city currently has a set of exemptions. And the coastal act also has some exemptions and then exceptions to exemptions. And they're not necessarily consistent between the two. And I think there are some advantages in, in both. And so I think, you know, the, the coastal development permit exemptions is something that, that staff has wanted to revise and, and clean up for quite a while. There's a lot of specificity in our existing exemptions and then they don't cover, you know, because they're from 1978. So they don't cover things that come up today. You know, that weren't around in 1978. So, so basically I'm starting to revise that section of, of the city zoning ordinance by adding, modifying the conditions of approval. So what I have here is I've taken the coastal act exemptions and right now I'm just focusing on residences. Taking it one piece at a time. And, and part of that is because it's part of one of our SB two tasks to sort of help streamline residential approvals and look at this. And also, you know, sometimes it's easier to look at some of these things in pieces. So so I've, I've sort of modified the coastal act exemptions to something that, that might be appropriate for Trinidad. I also, but I think there's also, there's a lot of things, you know, fences, fences and small retaining walls and, and landscaping and, and hot tubs and things that aren't, aren't necessarily clearly exempt in these coastal act exemptions that are exempted under the city's existing exemptions. And so I think maybe a, a, some sort of combination of the two might be worthwhile. So, you know, I think using this coastal act one is sort of a base, but then adding anything from the existing Trinidad exemptions and anything else we think should be included, like for example, you know, an exemption for a certain amount of grading. You know, I think that's good to, to keep having in there. So, so that's, that's what these first two sections are. And then the next one is, is a little bit different idea. So that's more of a permit. That's more of a procedural issue is, you know, if something came up that someone wanted to do that didn't clearly fall under one of these exemptions, but was pretty minimal, like a fence or a hot tub or something. We have a waiver process or, or one that I, I would really like to include is certain improvements to septic systems. You know, we don't want to have, have people have to go through the entire public hearing process just to, you know, put in a new leach field or something. So, so this waiver process again, is modeled off of what the coastal commission has this one currently. This one, the way this one would work is it would still, neighbors would be noticed and it, it could even still come to the planning commission for a, you know, maybe we'd add a consent agenda item like the city council has. And so, you know, it'd at least be on a meeting. And if anybody has any objections, they can pull it. That's how the coastal commission does it. Or, and/or there could also be some sort of administrative permit process where I would issue a permit. But I do sort of like the idea of having, you know, sort of that second layer because I, you know, someone wants to add, you know, bump out the corner of their kitchen. I don't know if that's going to impact somebody's view without notifying the neighbors. I can't determine that myself. So, so in some, it sort of lengthens the process and adds sort of the bureaucracy, but at least it doesn't require the full hearing procedure. So that's what that section is. So, and then the map at the end is the existing. So the yellow area is the area where the exemption for building a 500 square foot, 15 foot high accessory structure is not valid. Everywhere outside of those yellow areas, you can build a 500 square foot, 15 foot high accessory structure without design review. And that's been kind of, you saw in the 2002 minutes that that came up as an issue. And then the red, the hatched area and the red line is, is the, it's kind of the appealable area. It's what was certified. But the current coastal act regulations are a little different, like within 300 feet of a bluff is appealable so that, you know, like the eatery and the bed and breakfast, tho- those blocks are not in this mapped appealable area, but would, would actually be appealable to the coastal commission. You know, I, they consider, they don't consider like Underwood, things that are east of Underwood. They don't consider, they still consider that to be between the sea and the first public road because Underwood doesn't continue, but I, I don't know if I buy that. But anyway, so we'll be adjusting these boundaries, but that's, that's what they are now.
Okay. Thank you. I, my first question, I just had one quick question. It's kind of basic. And I wanted to make sure I understood the difference between an exemption and a waiver.
That's a, that's a good question. So an exemption is something that is exempt. You know, they come to the city like, like, you know, if someone came to the city and said, I, I want to build a, a six foot fence around my property, that's, that's clearly exempt. And I say, okay, go ahead. It just has to meet the requirements of, of the fence regulations. Whereas a waiver would be something that would be more like, well, it's, it's an addition to a house. You know, that, that maybe doesn't fall under these exemptions. It adds 10% of the floor area. And so it isn't an exemption, but it's, or maybe it's adding a roof on your porch or, or something like that, that isn't clearly under an exemption. And so you have to apply for the permit. But if we review it and say, oh, it's not going to have any impacts, we can waive the permit requirements.
Okay. So they waived the, you waived the permit requirement, which also waives the permit fee that is associated with it. Is that right?
It would certainly reduce the fee because it would reduce the amount of processing time and effort that goes into it, but I It would certainly reduce the fee because it would reduce the amount of processing time and effort that goes into it, but I think there would still be a fee associated with it, probably.
Okay, okay. Um, Commissioner Stockness.
So if you're going to add new siding to your house, Trevor, is that a waiver? Or an exemption, and do you need a permit? Because I was reading all this and it, you know, it's a little confusing. I get the hot tubs. I get that one.
Um, you know, I think.
And the daycares, yeah.
So, no, I think that's a good example, so, you know, something like siding, well, siding could also potentially fall under repair and maintenance, so that's, that's. That's sort of a separate exemption, but I think it's actually a good example for this, so. Say, so say someone wants to re-side their house, but they're, but they're within fifty feet of a bluff. So, so then this exemption wouldn't, wouldn't apply, because they're within that sort of sensitive area. But since it's just siding, they could do a waiver instead, because it's clearly. Not going to impact stability or environmentally sensitive habitat or, or anything like that. Um, so.
And so you give the exemptions and the waivers? That's your job?
Well, it, so. Yeah, cur- currently. Uh, I guess the city is, I read, well, I don't, I guess it's not really recently, um, but a couple of years ago, I, I found out. The Coastal Commission, the, the city is actually supposed to be documenting every exemption. But I, you know, when someone calls me up and says, hey, you know, I want to. Put a small porch on or a fence, I, I don't actually document that, um, I just say, yeah, go ahead. Um. A wa- a waiver would be a little bit different. A waiver, they would have to actually kind of sub- submit plans and go through some sort of process now. And it could, it could be administrative, so I could issue it. Um, or it could be more something that come, comes before the planning commission for a quick process. I, I think. I think neighbors should still be notified, and then they have a ch- a chance to. Ob- object to the waiver, if it's going to affect them, um, but in essence, I would be issuing the permit.
And so roofing, new roofs is, you need a permit?
Well, you need a building permit for re-roofing currently. Um, for design review, that's considered repair and maintenance, as long as it's using. Similar materials on a si- and not changing the appearance, so, for example. We've had a couple of questions about metal roofs come up recently, um, and. Um, you know, and I, I, I actually found some past precedents in history on this, where if, if the metal roof is going to be. Basically the same color as the existing roof. Then it doesn't need design review, but if it's going to be. If it's going to change the appearance, if it's going to be bright blue or something like that, then, then it would need. Design review because it changes the appearance of the structure, so that's, that's under the current regulations.
Okay, so then neighbors aren't really noticed, it's just if there's a design permit. Required, then the neighbors are noticed, okay?
That's correct. We don't, we don't have an intermediate process right now. It's either exempt or it requires design review.
Other questions or comments? Commissioner Johnson?
So this is another point where I think it would be useful to have some sort of pictorial or logic diagram, whatever you want to call it. So that people can kind of understand and walk their way through, beginning with a project. And then determining whether or not it requires specific review and what review it, it would require, or is it. Exempt? Or is it a waiverable project? Something like that, I think, would be very useful to the public in terms of trying to make sure they understand exactly. How this is all worked out. Um. Had a couple of other comments real fast. One is, we use a couple of, um. Finite numbers in here, uh, two thousand and one hundred thousand dollars, and yeah, Aaron, you're absolutely right. Uh, that, we got to figure out what that, how we address that, because. Those numbers, if they're static like that, mean nothing because of inflation and housing prices and building costs, et cetera. Uh, so, uh, I, I would suggest that we come up with something other than just the two discrete numbers. Uh, that are used on page three and page five. Um. Because, first of all, a, um. Repairs that involve only replacement within, uh, that does not, uh, aggregate over two thousand dollars value, value in valuation in twelve-month period. I, yeah. I just, that, 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 that doesn't work anymore. Um, the, the other thing which I, uh, I, a couple of other things that I just didn't quite, um, uh, uh, understand is, um. Well, first of all, where, where would this, where do these ex- uh, exceptions, exemptions and waivers wind up? Is that in the land use element?
The, these would actually be in the zoning ordinance, so.
Oh, okay, okay, all right, all right, fair enough, got it.
And so, like, the exemptions, the existing Trinidad exemptions are, I think. Seventeen, seven-two, seven-two, oh. Oh, seven-oh, they're kind of hidden under the section on coastal development permits, um.
Okay, thank you. Um. Uh, uh, just a couple of other nits, um. I think, uh, on page two, under s- item C one, where it talks about the standard, and I assume that's pronounced electro-lay. Uh, and I guess that's like street lighting. But again, thirty-five feet sounds high. I don't know, but, uh, that, that just doesn't make any sense. Um, the other item is, under that is two C, television and radio antennas. I know that we've. There's, um, elsewhere in ordinances, there's some discussion about that. And, um, if there isn't, there should be, as we all know. Uh, particularly now, of course, it's not a big deal, but I know there was quite a controversy with the satellite, uh, dishes that people were using. Um. On, uh, item, um, C I, solar heating systems on page three. Um. A- again, I, I kind of question whether or not we should, uh, limit the size of any solar installation. Uh, at this point, uh, I think we should tell people, put up as much solar as you possibly can. Um. And then the final comment is on page four, under two D. OW, OWTS improvements, just as you were talking, Trevor. Uh. Uh, improvements, repairs and upgrades that do not increase the capacity of the system. Somehow, I think we have to integrate our OWTS ordinance into that. And maybe you already have thought about that, probably have, but I just wanted to say that, um. Uh, that, that, that probably should be integrated with the OWTS. And, and that's basically. I, I think I understand this, I think I understand where it's supposed to go, but I'll go back to my original comment, that, yeah, I think some way of. Having a little flow diagram, decision matrix thing. Would help people understand, um, where they're headed in the permitting process. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Commissioner Hicken?
Thank you for the dollar amount that was on my list. Um, a question, Trevor, on the modified coastal exempt. Exemptions, that's on page three, B, the ten percent, um, B four, I'm assuming the intent behind B four. Is to mean that there's no way somebody can do an iterative, you know, I'm going to increase my property by nine percent. My building by nine percent, then next year I'm going to do another nine percent, and now I've done eighteen. That's the intent behind that? Um, and.
Yes.
And then where and how is that tracked?
Uh.
As we have change in folks and permits and, and, you know, I just, putting that out there to the great Nether region to see. Obviously, that needs to be tracked, otherwise, you, you know, you wait for. Mom said no, ask dad, kind of a situation to present itself.
Great point, yeah. Um, I don't, and I don't have an answer for you right now.
Yeah, no, that's, which is totally fair, and then the other thing, uh, you know, to Richard's point, um. You know, one of the, on my list of many things to do with the property that we bought in town is landscaping. And as I'm learning on the planning commission, I'm not sure I can just go walk out. And go to Miller Farms or whoever and buy a bunch of plants and put them in, or Rock Pass, you know, it's. It, it would be a good example of something that could definitely use some kind of a FAQ or Q and A type thing, or a rubric, or some kind of, I mean, just. That's just one example that's very specific to, you know, next steps for me here within the next year, as, as I start to tackle things outside of structure. Um. Because it's just, it's not clear.
No, I, I totally agree, I think especially in, you know, basically. Under the city's existing ordinance, it's really. Not regulated unless you're, maybe if you fall under the grading ordinance of a thousand square feet or, or more, um, but I think. You know, people probably do that all the time, and, um. We've never required permits for it, I think. Now, there is, I forget what the, what the square footage is, but there's actually a s- a state. Law that was enacted a few years ago that the city is supposed to be implementing, but I. Again, I don't see landscape plans, really. I did have one project come in that I, that was over the limit. And it would have needed design review and some other things too, but it's, it's a water-efficient landscaping ordinance, and if you replace. If you add or replace a certain square footage of landscaping, you have to then comply with the state law that requires. Um. You know, low drought-tolerant plants and, you know, drip irrigation kind of stuff, um. But it, it's, it's a very complicated, it's like a twenty-page ordinance. Um, but the city does need to adopt something to, to implement that, otherwise we, we're supposed to be using the state's rules.
I think that's in, just going back, CD six-point-one on page seven, new developments shall be required to utilize of the. Uh, with drip irrigation, other water conserving, I don't know if that.
Yeah.
Is what you're speaking to, I just.
Yeah, and then I think.
I read it somewhere in tonight's plethora of paper.
Yeah, and I think there's a program under that, that the city is going to implement or, or adopt a water-efficient landscape ordinance, um, so that. Um, and actually, one of our LEAP tasks is to do that, um, and, and I really. I, I did mention to, to Gabe to let me know next time they kind of do some updates on the website, because I think having some, some FAQs would be really. Helpful for people, and, and it's an issue that, that keeps coming up, and, um, you know, it, it's, it's going to take some time, you know, to, to develop those. We can, we can steal some from other places, but they'll have to be modified for, for Trinidad. Um, but I think those, it would be really good to have those. On, on the website.
Okay, that's all I got, thanks.
All right, thank you. Um, Trevor, I just had one question, I think everybody else covered all the other items I had, um. There's a, on page one, item C. I guess I was, it was unclear to me what we're saying about the use of existing or permitted structures for keeping pets. Small family daycare homes, licensed residential care facilities, et cetera. Are we saying. Uh, converting a residence to any of those uses is exempt from the need for a permit? Is that the idea? Okay. All right. So, okay. Okay. Thank you. Other, any other comments or questions? And Trevor, have we, I guess that would, uh, be, have we answered? Has this been helpful? Do you have what you need from us?
I think I can keep working on it. I do think, I mean, if you. And maybe it doesn't have to be to- tonight, but I, I would like all of you, like. Richard started going through some of the existing exemptions, and I totally agree with the ones he mentioned. The, these are what we have now. Um, you know, like, the standard electorally are not over thirty-five feet, I, you know. Um. So. As like I said, we don't have to go through it tonight, but if you guys want to go through these and mark up what you think. Should stay and what should go. I would appreciate some, some feedback on that, and you can do it tonight, you could email it to me, we could do it at the next meeting, whatever. Whatever works, um, but I, I would like. Like some feedback on, on those in particular.
How would you guys like to do this? Do you want to just go through it quickly now? Do you want to, um, send an email to Trevor if you have? Feedback? Diane?
So what, I'm not quite sure, are we doing, um. The Coastal Act exemptions and. The Trinidad exemptions? Is that what we're doing, Trevor?
Yeah, I mean, eventually, I, I mean, and tonight, yes, we're looking at them all, but, but. Right now, starting on page two, this is what we have now. Um, and we could, we could throw the whole thing out. Um, but I, I think there are some, some good things in here that are worth keeping, and so. That, that's one of the specific ones I'm looking for feedback, because this is what we have now. And so what do we want to keep and what do we want to get rid of?
And so Gabe, Gabe knows all about these?
Yeah.
Okay, so Anton, are you there? Is he, is he still there?
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, good, so you could read these with Gabe, and then you guys could, um, you know, just chat about what. What these waivers and, um, exemptions are and see what's, you know, what's in the. In the drawers or the files.
Sure, sure.
And then we, and then you would know more, because you're going to get a lot of questions between nine and eleven before. Gabe comes in, so I don't know, I mean, we could do whatever, Cheryl, we can talk.
Yeah, so you're saying the city staff may have some input because they get the.
Well, yeah, and I think Anton is going to get, he's going to get questions, because he's the one that opens up the office and the people that are. You know, ready to get going in the morning, you're going to come and ask him questions. And he's doing a fabulous job. I just didn't know if, um. He and Gabe and Eli would talk about those also. I, I'll do whatever.
Okay.
I'll definitely talk to you with Eli and, uh, Gabe about this tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner Higginson?
I'd ask if we can, uh, take this as homework for next month's meeting, um, I feel I'm in, after the discussion, kind of the intro with Trevor and everybody tonight, I know I'm in a better position to kind of. Intelligently evaluate these now. I have a better understanding of what I'm being asked to do than just by the document. I, I don't mean to put it off. Um, rather than try and go point by point now, it'll give me some time to think, and. That would be my preference.
Okay, and I see heads nodding, and I agree, I'm just looking at a few of these, I'm not sure I could rattle off off the top of my head what would be more appropriate. Um. Personally, so yeah, let's, let's have some more discussion on this next month. Okay? All right, so we're at the time of the meeting then for commissioner report, so are there any commissioner reports from outstanding? And before I do that, I'm sorry, I'm going to open to public comments. Are there any public comments about the, uh, streamlining residential projects? Topic, okay, I see now, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure I did that, and I see no commissioner reports. So we're at the staff report, and I had a question as part of the staff report. Um, uh, for Eli, but he's, since he's not here tonight, I don't know if you know Trevor, but I know that the city council discussed the, uh, general plan. Uh, in their last meeting, I was not able to attend, I was coming back from, um, writing for some doctor's appointments and stuff, so. Anyway, um, I just wondered if. We got any feedback on that, and then whatever else you'd like to ta- share with us.
Yeah, so, um, I gave the council an update on where we're at with the, the general plan, and they requested, and I mentioned that the. Planning Commission. Wants the city council to see the Coastal Commission comments and responses, and they have asked to see the Coastal Commission comments before. So I'm going to, a, a couple of things came out of that, um, one, I'm going to give them. Quarterly updates on, on what we're doing with the general plan, but I'm also going to give them. In pieces what we've done in the last year or so, since the last update, so I'll probably. They, they saw the land use elements, and since you guys saw it and the Coastal Commission comments were responded to, the next would be the. Commu- uh, conserv- commu- uh, conservation element, which is very messy. If you recall, there's actually two track changes versions because it got so messy with the coastal commission comments. So I'm actually going to, um, I'm hoping this week to sort of get something cleaned up and ready to give them because they also, they, they requested that they get those in advance of the packet so that they have more time to review them. So I am gonna be prepping something for their December meeting. Um, you know, I don't know how much they'll wanna go through it, but, um, they, they want, um, they wanna be a little bit more active, and I'm, I'm hoping, I'm hopeful that I'm gonna start getting more of the figures done now that we, we have the city limit issues, I think, worked out, um, so I can start getting figures and then I can start getting these back to the coastal commission um, for, for further comment. So, so we'll just, we'll just keep working on it. Um, other than that, yeah, I've still got SB two and, and LEAP grant tasks as, as one of my priorities to meet those grant requirements, spend that money. I did give the ADU ordinance to coastal commission staff. Um, the council also reviewed the STR ordinance, but didn't really comment on it. They want, um, there's a couple issues they wanted some more information on. They prefer to have coastal commission comments. Um, and that's, they're under staff, so that's gonna take a bit of time. So I think they're gonna review it, um, as soon as we get any comments back from the coastal commission or in February, if we don't have comments back yet, which we should.
All right. Excellent, thank you. Um, future agenda items. I captured a few things from our earlier discussion. We'd like to add to the list the vegetation ordinance and specifically, uh, how, how it's enforced and what the process is and just reviewing that, and then signage. Um, including the permitting process. And maybe a field trip. Commissioner Hopkins?
Last meeting, last meeting kind of left a bad taste in my mouth in regards to that gentleman that cut the tree.
All right, we lost, we- We lost you there, Tom. Say it again.
Oh, I'm sorry about that. The, we live in a rainforest and people aren't gonna cut their trees if they have to. Um, and then we're gonna have the same problem Diane's talking about. It's just, it just seemed, last meeting, it seemed weird. I thought about it a lot. Um, it just seems like you're, you're not trying to get people to do what they want, what you want them to do by, by charging them a lot or, I, I don't know, it just seemed like a weird way to enforce things. And it's true.
Yeah, so, so the whole trees, kind of vegetation and trees and tree height and when people, what's the process when people wanna take down trees? I mean, we've had, uh, in the past, you know, we've had situations where, uh, landscaping was, you know, just completely cut down. So we've had that situation, and we've had situations where, uh, you know, people take out, um, so take out vegetation maybe where they shouldn't take out vegetation, and we have situations where people are trying to follow a process, but they don't know what the process is. And so, yeah, so you're absolutely right, Tom. I mean, I think, I think we were all in, I felt like we were all in kind of violent agreement that it's not clear to people what they should do and that sometimes the permits are costly. Um, sometimes appropriately so and, and maybe so other times not, right? But um, so we could add that to the vegetation piece and just, you know, how is it, how are we, how are we structuring the ordinances and then how are we communicating them? Uh, so that they're, you know, people can understand. It's a tough one for me too, because I, you know, I love trees, so I always default to, don't cut the trees. No, anyway. Commissioner Johnson?
Uh, just, just a real quick follow-up. I, I thought about this too, and, and one of the things that I think, uh, is very perplexing right now is that we have on one hand, uh, a requirement that, uh, we clear a safe zone. And, and then we have a requirement that, oh no, you, uh, any, any tree above a certain diameter requires a permit. So, uh, my thought was that we ought to come up with a, a, a system that I don't think will be too difficult, where within everyone's safety zone, uh, that the permitting process could be streamlined so that, uh, we could maintain a safe distance for these kinds of safety issues, fire issues, uh, and then anything beyond that, you know, falls under a different category. So I, I kind of get the same thing that, that Tom's talking about, and I just thought that maybe we could divide it into two separate issues. Thanks.
Yeah, that's a good point. And then, and then what I learned from talking to the, uh, fire department, right, to CAL FIRE, was that there's different hierarchies of require, of permitting and, and requirements uh, related to that. So, good point.
So I do want to clarify, I don't, I don't recall signage, was signage permitting a future agenda item? Or was that more part of our design discussion? But I do want to add-
Yeah, maybe it's more part of the design discussion.
I think at the last meeting, one of the things we talked about wanting to revisit was the after-the-fact permit policy. So how about I add that, um, in addition to the vegetation regulations?
Okay, and Commissioner Stockness, you had a comment on the signs or something, maybe?
Well, I just, I, I think a field trip would be good for the committee. Um, you know, we can look at signs, we can look at trees, we can look at neighborhoods and how, like Tom brought up, be, and what was in the two thousand and two, um, you know, part that Trevor gave us, be a good neighbor versus strict standards. So I think that's where we're at until we get it all cleared up like Richard, um, said, you know, whether it's an exemption, a waiver, a permit. You know, and then we had the, um, now I'm, now I'm getting tired. Um, oh, the website. And then we can get Anton and Gabe, um, to redo the website so it's, you know, more of a checklist than a, you know, than a big, something that they have to read. Simple, simple sentences.
All right, so I'll work offline with, um, Trevor and Anton on the, on the field trip because we would, we would need to, um, put that on as a public meeting since we would all be going. Um, but I would also say that it'd have to be a different time of day because we're not gonna see much after dark now. So, um-
Yeah, and is it something you wanna do right away or do you wanna wait till, you know, the weather gets better, which is a ways away, but-
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know if we wanna do it in the pouring rain either.
Yeah.
Well, and I don't think we want to do it in December because of all the other activities that go on, family and, and community. Um, but you know, sometimes we have three weeks of gorgeous weather in, in January, right?
And, and we can set a special meeting with just twenty-four hour notice, so-
Okay.
Okay.
So I would shoot for, you know, mid-January, maybe.
For, for January.
January?
Shoot for January.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay.
All right, so we'll work on that and, um, okay. Other, any other future agenda items? Otherwise, okay, then we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a great rest of your evening.
Night, everybody.
And happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah, happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah, all of you. Gobble, gobble, eat too much, wobble, wobble. Happy Thanksgiving.